Be led by William, Thomas, and Samuel Tuberville. Y'all ready?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Thank y'all. We all come up front for this thing? We got a City of Appeal for each of y'all. Thank y'all so much for leading us in the pledge. Alderman Miller, would you lead us in our invocation?
Thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, once again, Lord, we're coming before you, so we are so thankful for this day that you allow us to witness. And then, Heavenly Father, with prayer, we go forward in this meeting. Heavenly Father, we'll do things, the first will be pleading in our sight. Then, Lord, we thank you, Lord, for the opportunity that you have given each and every one of us to serve, whatever capacity it might be. And then, Lord, we thank you for this great county, this great city, this great state, this great state, United States that we live in. Continue, Lord, to bless our souls wherever they might be. We thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I do want to make notes that Alderman Piper is joining us remotely, so he is with us on the phone. Can I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the docket of claim numbers listed on your agenda?
So move.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion passes. Item six is to approve the minutes from the regular mayor and board of aldermen meeting of April 15th.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item seven is the consent agenda. Can I have a motion on that?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And the consent agenda passes. Item eight was added. This is an announcement. It seems a little odd that it's not something we're approving, but the city of Hernando's election commissioners have officially dispensed with the June 3, 2025, general election and declared each candidate to be elected without opposition. And on the face of it, it sounds, it seems a little odd, but this is, the election commissioners that we appointed have made the good decision, I think, in accordance with state statute, to dispense with the election because everyone that has won in the primary or did not have a primary does not have an opponent. So this will save the city a lot of money for not holding a general election just to put our names on the ballot with no opponents. So...
Matter of the record, could you put, put in the record what the estimated saving to the city by not having their election in June?
Probably about $14,000.
City clerk says that's about a $14,000 savings.
So it's more than just, I think it's something to be, Susan should be happy about. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So that was just an announcement. No action needs to be taken, but it will be included in the minutes. Item nine is the donations docket.
So move.
Sure.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And that motion passes. Next, we have a couple of presentations for community service awards. The first one's gonna be for Renee Triplet. I'm gonna give a brief history on Renee. She's a graduate of the University of South Alabama with a bachelor's in recreational therapy, a graduate of Freed Hardman University, masters of curriculum and instruction and educational leadership. From 97 to 2003, she was a teacher for DeSoto County Schools, Monroe County Schools and Parkwood Academy. 2003 to 2008, she was the assistant principal at Hernando Elementary School. 2008 to 2009, the assistant principal at Hernando... What's her name?
Hills.
The Hernando Hills. You got misspelled, and I couldn't figure out what that word was. And as, the role we know her in the most, and most recently, is she has been the principal from 2009 to 2025 of Horn Lake Elementary School and has enriched many children's lives. This community service award is in grateful recognition of your commitment to serving others and your community. On this day, the city of Hernando presents this award to Renee Triplet, principal of Hernando Elementary. And then, I want you to say a few words, if you would. We'll get a quick picture.
Don't tell nobody.
We've got her Walmart greeter jacket for her next job.
Yeah, there we go.
Ms. Triplet, if you wouldn't mind saying a few words? Yeah, that'll be good, yeah. Hey, Dad, Matt, or whenever you're most comfortable with it.
First, I'd like to thank the mayor and all the city council for honoring me. This is really a great honor. I would be very remiss if I did not pay my respects to the Lord above, because he has really blessed me. My people in Hernando Elementary, if you have children or you have grandchildren going in that direction, they're really blessed. They have two great leaders coming on board. Both his teams is okay. And the need them is very traumatic for me, for my betterment, because they're my family. And without them, there'd be nothing. My needs are both educators, and we follow in the footsteps of about 250 years. I tried to put it together today, and I have to quit counting after about three minutes. I'm lucky and I'm blessed. And I have extended family here. I have all the in-laws for the girls, so I'm equally blessed. Have you been to Lando family with me? Thank you so much. I appreciate it, and I hope I can leave one lasting legacy. Yes, we gotta give back to make it better for the life.
Amen.
So that's my thing.
Thank you, Ms. Triplet. Item 11 is to recognize the Hernando High School Girls Basketball Team and Coach Blake Jones for winning the DeSoto County District Championship. So I'm gonna run through this real quick. Coach Blake Jones, the district coach of the year, has coached 16 seasons and won five district titles. The team made it to the Elite Eight, back-to-back district champions, won the district championship this year, have not lost a division game in two seasons, the longest district winning streak in Mississippi of 24 games, 10-0 in the district, and 22-7 overall. Let's hear it for the girls' basketball team. Standing behind a basketball team is not easy. Thank y'all for representing us so well.
Thank you.
Wait, wait, did you get it?
I'm gonna get your picture.
Did y'all get him?
Yeah, yeah, get all the pictures you want.
Put me on Times Square.
Andrew, you just want your picture made.
Yes. And you do too.
And can Fran Kelly stay up here? All right, while, while we're here with Fran Kelly, Fran Kelly has been awarded the Gatorade Mississippi Girls Basketball Player of the Year, awarded the 7A Miss Basketball, considered one of the top offensive threats in Mississippi, averaged 27 and a half points per game. She's a junior and plays guard, and we would like to recognize you on your own merit tonight, Fran. Thank you for all you do.
She's been scared for that three.
Please do, yes, sir.
I gotta call out Alderman Robertson and Alderman Miller for all the support. I know every single one of you guys come to the game, but them two mean a lot to our team. I've seen them constantly at all the games, and the votes that they put on in here go to these youth right here. Second of all, you see a lot of our team in here. We've got folks traveling, we've got folks that couldn't make it tonight, and they all wish that they could have. I also wanna call out my seniors that I have here. You three stand up for me. They mean a lot to me. It's been a fun four years with them. We're seeing them on into college, and this thing goes fast. I don't know if you've been in education. They grow, they grow so fast, but the water y'all put on in this room makes them grow. So we appreciate everything you guys do, Mayor, Alderman. We, the things you guys do doesn't go unnoticed to us in the school system, so thank y'all.
Thank you so much, Coach. Item 13 is to recognize the Public Works Employee of the Month for April.
Good evening. Today's a real honor to recognize someone who has dedicated over two decades of hard work and service to the city of Hernando. Our employee of the month is none other than Rodrick Miller. Most of you guys seen him around. Rodrick began his journey with the city May 3, 2004, and over the years, he's worn many hats, starting as a garbage collector and working as a brush truck driver, part of the mowing crew, crew leader, and eventually becoming the brush truck and sanitation supervisor. A few years back, workload just got too much for all of our departments. So we split the sanitation and the brush department, and now Rodrick runs the, is the sanitation supervisor. Sanitation may sound like trash, but it's picking up paper, it's mowing, it's weed eating, picking up limbs, animals and stuff out of the road. It's kind of a catch-all for everybody, so... Rodrick manages the largest crew in public works department, and responsibility he carries with it is skill, consistency, and leadership. What stands out most about Rodrick's not just his hard work ethic, but his willingness to lead by example and support his team through every challenge. He contributes to play, he continues to play a battle part in keeping our city clean and beautiful and running smoothly. Rodrick, thank you for years of dedication and pride you take in your work. You set an extraordinary example for all of us, and we're proud to name you employee of the month, so.
Get your picture in.
Why don't you get your own make-up, man?
Good job, Rodrick. Y'all are welcome to stay, but you don't have to. You wanna get a picture? All of you? Y'all wanna come do it now?
Do you mind?
Come on. Let's do it.
I want my whole picture.
I comb my hair for tonight.
Thank you so much.
You're acting like a principal.
Frank, dude. That's mine. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. You want just the girls? Reeducated, no pictures.
Photo night.
Thank you. Come visit us.
We'll see you at the retirement party. I do wanna notice, we kinda glossed over the donations docket tonight. One of, a couple of these items. One of them, Cook's Pest Control's been spraying the chemicals and materials and doing the labor at Milton Kirchendahl Park. Just wanted y'all to be aware of that. The Hernando Young Women's Club is donating new playground equipment and installation, which will take a few months, but believe it or not, the playground equipment that's there has aged out. It's not considered to be appropriate anymore with the new rules, so they're putting new playground equipment in there. And of course, Southern Pediatric Therapy, a lot of us went to the ball they threw and raised money. They're gonna be putting in the handicap-accessible playground equipment. So those are some major donations that were on that docket tonight, so I just wanted to read those to you. We'll move on to item number 14, which is the approval of the proclamation for National Cancer Survivors' Day, which will be June 1, 2025. I'm gonna read this proclamation. City of Hernando Proclamation for National Cancer Survivors' Day. Whereas a cancer survivor is defined as anyone living with a history of cancer from the moment of diagnosis through the remainder of life, and there are more than 18 million cancer survivors in America, and whereas since the number of cancer survivors is projected to increase to 22.2 million by 2030, increased access to effective cancer treatments, quality survivorship care, and necessary psychosocial resources, especially among minorities and the medically underserved, must be a top priority in our community. And whereas the city of Hernando has a valuable, dynamic cancer survivor population, and whereas hundreds of communities worldwide will be celebrating life on Sunday, June 1, and whereas, on behalf of the people of Hernando, I salute all cancer survivors and those who support them. Now therefore, I, Chip Johnson, mayor of the city of Hernando, and the board of aldermen, do hereby proclaim observance of National Cancer Survivors' Day, Sunday, June 1, 2025, in Hernando, and urge all citizens to join, join in this exuberant celebration of life. Would y'all like to come up? This is the DeSoto Hope Group, my friend.
Yeah, we're all cancer survivors.
Thank y'all for being here and bringing attention to this.
How many pictures can they get this time?
That's okay, so, you know, we'll see y'all at the final.
I'm gonna read this one too, since we have a couple of them here. The City of Hernando Proclamation for the 56th Annual Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, May 4 through 10. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And where it is, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Chip Johnson, mayor of the city of Hernando, and the board of aldermen, recognize the week of May 4 through 10, 2025, as Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. I'm gonna hand that to you to receive on behalf of yourself and all the clerks in Hernando.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for all you do. You know, I've been reading these proclamations, and I hadn't had y'all vote on them. Yeah, we'll do them as a block after we do this next one. I got so excited doing them. It seems fitting tonight, too, to move on to item 16 and proclaim National Public Works Week of 2025. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of DeSoto County. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our county's transportation, drainage, and other systems, and structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in DeSoto County to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities, and whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Chip Johnson, mayor of the city of Hernando and the board of aldermen, hereby proclaim that the week of May 18 through 24, National Public Works Week. We urge all citizens to join us in paying tribute and recognizing all city of Hernando public works employees as they are substantial contributors in protecting and maintaining the health, safety, and quality of all Hernando residents. Lee, would you wanna come up and accept this on behalf of you and your team? So if we could, items 10 through 16, can I have a motion to approve all of those as a block?
She'll move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And that motion passes. Item 17, we'll move on to the approval of the Murphy paving change order for $42,901 on the asphalt paving project for 2024. Joe, would you like to give a brief synopsis of that?
Okay, if you remember, that was a contract for several streets in $833,000 range, so we needed 5% more asphalt to complete that project, and that's what we're here tonight for, approve that change order.
Any questions on that item?
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item 18 is a surprise. It's the approval of the Hernando and DeSoto County Memorandum of Understanding to appropriate up to $110,000 for approving Mackinville Road. Maybe three weeks ago, Supervisor Foster called me, and he had been looking at the work on the roundabout, and in his mind, it wasn't really gonna be complete as we came out to the north until that little section of Mackinville was widened, that one little section where it goes down to Tulane in front of Goodwill, and he said he would like to help with that. He convinced the board of supervisors to allocate up to $110,000 to finish out that project. Joe Lauderdale has worked with Bob Jarman, I think, and his crew to come up with the estimate and talk to Farrell Paving. Since it is an extension of that project and it's less than 25%, it can fit within that project and just be done as an add-on, so we'll be able to have Farrell Paving do that work, and then we'll be reimbursed by the county for it. Joe, do you wanna add anything to that?
I think you pretty well have said everything about it. I've talked to Farrell Paving about adding that to their contract, and they're willing to do that, so tonight you need a change order to take care of that, adding that to their contract.
So, go ahead.
Think $110,000 will cover that cost?
Yes.
Yeah, that caught my eye, too. Item number 14 states that anything over the $110,000, should there be an extra amount, the city will have to cover that cost, so I'm glad to hear you say you hopefully budgeted that a little high for us, maybe?
I think so.
Good.
But I think even, even that debt is still a good expenditure of taxpayer dollars regardless that you can get, just like doing the 20% match, you know, if somebody give you 80, you do 20%, you know, we... I mean, so if it do be overrun from the estimate, I think that, thank God, I mean...
It would be minor.
Yeah, and for the partnership, that's the whole key, is for the partnership and making this happen, so...
No question.
I think I was, I was in agreement. I think I was in agreement for this, though.
Appreciate the stick, brothers.
It's gonna help, it's gonna help everything.
So in this motion, we probably need to approve the resolution for the memorandum of understanding and to amend the contract.
Amending contract?
Yes. With Farrell Paving on this project.
So you want two different resolutions on one, I mean, two motions on one?
You want one motion? Okay, one motion will be fine for both those items. Somebody wants to make a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And I do wanna make sure, for the record, we state how appreciative we are for Supervisor Robert Foster and the entire board of supervisors for partnering with us on this. It means a lot to us. Item 19 is the approval for Tegra Medical's personal property exemption in the amount of $1,178,104 and 27 cents for equipment fixtures, leasehold improvements. I think that's already been before the county. The exemption will be for five years total.
Did they comply with all the requirement, the prerequisite that we, that we required? I think the last time, they missed the employment side of it.
Susan, Susan just left.
Nobody here from the office, but I think this is something that you can still check on.
Yeah, I will check on that.
Ensure that they meet the employment side of it also.
Okay. I will triple-check on that. They have a total of, yeah, they have a total of 80 full-time employees right now. So it does meet the threshold.
Okay.
Is there a motion on that exemption?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item 20, Joe Frank, I'll let you lead that one. It's the approval to advertise for public hearing for a possible loan for DWSI for funding the program of water line improvements on Bahalia Road.
Okay. Been working on the facilities plan as to explain to the health department why we need the money and how we're gonna spend the money, and... So I had, that had to be in the 1st of May. They notified me yesterday they had received it, and we need to have a public hearing to tell the public about the project and why we need the project, and so we need to just set a, just approve that public hearing, and then Pam and I will work on the details of the, putting it in the paper and setting a date according to the health department's regulations. And this line will connect the Bahalia Road Water Plant to the Madison Lakes Elevated Tank, which, it's about a mile of 12-inch line along Bahalia Road. Currently, we have only a 3-inch line in that area, so... And this will put the city in position to serve, of course, north up to Green Tea Road and cross under 269 with enough water and enough pressure.
Any questions on that item? Not, can I have a motion for approval to advertise?
Motion. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Item 21 is the public health and safety hearing for the properties located at the lagoon parcels on the southern terminus of Dogwood Hollow. The parcel numbers are listed in your agenda. Also, would you lead us on that one?
Yes, sir. It's code for the case 1996. As you mentioned, these are for the lagoons at the southern end of the Dogwood Hollow subdivision. With the recent offload of the gray water systems within the subdivision to these lagoons, they're no longer in use. They've been a pretty constant code enforcement battle for us with grass, trees, and now we've got stagnant water. We've posted the property. We've made numerous attempts to try it with the property owner to let him know they're, they're in nonconformity and they need to be reclaimed. to let him know they're, they're in nonconformity and they need to be reclaimed. We've received no response, and so that's kind of generated the hearing tonight to get the authority of taking next steps of reclamation to make them to where they're safe and they're no longer a nuisance to the neighbors. I put pictures in your staff report of kind of what we're looking at. The taxes are delinquent on the property right now. They were not paid in twenty-three. Twenty-four has a pretty large assessment from the last time we cut the grass and cut the trees and got it to a basic shape last year, and those have not been paid as of this year yet, and so it's going into the third year of delinquency now. Currently, the owner is Advanced Cleaning and Maintenance Corporation, which is out of Florida, absentee ownership. We've sent certified mail, we've sent regular mail, we've made phone calls, and no response. And so, we're here tonight just to ask to take the next steps with DEQ for reclamation.
And just for the record, now, this was the third, second or third year that we have dealt with this piece of property?
It's my second year, yes, sir.
Okay, and, and written now, the total indebtedness to the city in excess of, what, twelve, fifteen thousand dollars already?
Yes, sir.
And based upon what's going on now, so we're looking at how many, rough estimate, what'd you think it would take to do just a rough estimate? I know we, we don't have none, but just a rough estimate. Every fourteen thousand dollars in this written now, so we're looking at another ten? And so, we're talking about, Joe, from your standpoint, just, we, we know you hadn't looked at it.
Yeah.
But it's gonna be substantial, correct?
Yes.
It's gonna be substantial. And so, it, 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 the rule that we are applying by, and, and the step we are taking out here to the attorney in a few minutes for some more clarification, that, the step we use is adding it back to taxes. And so, so my, my, and I'm gonna need some help from, from Mr. Pittman here, is I think we need to move from that with actually legal proceeding against the old owner, because we can't get no, we can't get in no worse a shape, so we, we finna go into a, we finna go to a point now that we might even have to make a loan, because that's houses waste.
And then he just won't pay his taxes.
And then, all he do is just won't pay his taxes, be turned on, so I think that we need, at, at, at the turn, I think we need to, when we find this in violation, is definitely the, if I were turning to look at what legal proceeding that we can take outside of just adding it to taxes, because that, that's not gonna work.
They're pretty much proving that they-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's just so, I mean, we can, we're gonna do that step, I think we need to take another look at another route.
Could you dig into that for us?
Absolutely. So, I, I tell you, we're just doing this on a case-by-case basis. If you want me to do more on particular case-
We'll, we'll authorize you to do it, yeah.
If you're going to do that, and we'll do that.
But I think this is one here that definitely rise to the occasion.
And we have someone that wants to speak. If you would come up, state your name and address for the clerk.
We're Jesse and Lauren Olmstead. We live at ten eighty Dogwood Hollow Drive, right next to the ponds. So, I actually have been in contact with that owner. I tracked him down and said, hey, I know you paid for him. Those things are full of water moccasins, we have young girls, we've been, I just, we just had to kill a snake in my shop earlier today, you know, we have pets. I actually took my mower on our side and just knocked a ring around it down to try to keep all that stuff in there, and so I have another proposition, and, and that would be-
Well-
To find out, because we, we would like to take care of those and just absorb those into our property, because if you-
Or at least the one on our side.
If you look at that, that, if you look at that land, it's basically an L shape, and so that small part of the L is that pond. We would take care of both of them, just to be done with them, and we could absorb that small chunk into our property, it's just gonna be grass, you know, and we would take care of the other side. We have all the means to be able to do that, we have the construction, you know, connections and all of that.
The lot, when he purchased it, it says it's point five nine acres, but it's actually point three three is what is fenced into around the pond. The rest of it has been fenced into our yard since two thousand and three. And the one across the street, it's the same situation, I'm not quite sure on the exact measurements of theirs, but it's the same thing. It's fenced in, the rest has been fenced in and maintained by the other owner.
And, and those fences have been in, in existence for over ten years.
So, are y'all negotiating with that man to purchase them?
He, he-
He texted him back, he called, and then he texted.
He's like, oh, well, yeah, I'll sell you for him, you know, so.
And he was saying that he would sell them to us for three thousand dollars, I believe.
But there's a twelve thousand dollar lien on them.
See, so, good to know.
Yeah, I told him, I said, I said, they're gonna take these from you guys, that's what I told him. I, I never actually had a verbal conversation with him, I had a text conversation with him after I tracked him down, we, we went and found that, we saw what they paid for the original, which was, I think, two hundred and five dollars or something they paid back, that's what they purchased that for. And so, I was like, hey, what do you want to do with these? They're gonna take these from you, you guys are not maintaining them. We will try to come in and just absorb this.
And we can do the dirt work.
We have all-
So, y'all could clean them up and everything.
We could clean them all up.
So, do y'all have the, I don't know that we can forgive our lien against the property, looking at our attorneys.
I definitely would not want five point three three acres. Especially since it's really list, realistically.
Yeah.
I mean, you're looking at probably forty thousand gallons of water that are gonna have to be pulled out of there. I don't believe there's liners in there, so there's gonna have to be, you know, X amount of dirt that's gonna have to be removed from there, like, it's gonna be a process.
It is.
Yeah.
But I, I don't want my, also don't want my nine-year-old daughter getting bit by a water moccasin, you know what I mean?
He walked up there the other day to take a photo.
And I got chased out of there, and they were actually, they were breeding, wind came at us.
Oh, God.
So, and that's, that's, our yard is, you know-
Man, we really believe, what, what them transpired, them, I still think that we on the road to where we need to go with allowing our attorney to-
To explore.
To explore, and then that'd just be another option.
Yeah.
Because we definitely got to go this route before we can ever get to your route.
And then we cross the street, I know that, I think they have the same address, like, they're technically together-
But they're two separate parcels.
But they're across the street from each other, and I know that Sean Green, who owns the house across the street, he purchased.
Yeah, and we were talking, and he's not really, he, I could use his equipment, and, and we could use all of our manpower between our two businesses and get that cleaned up. He's not really interested in absorbing it into his property, he's not saying that he wouldn't.
But if it was done, he would.
Just to get it off of our backs and just make it into a yard, you know?
So, I think for tonight, to keep the process going, we're gonna have to say it's a public health and safety hazard, and then we're gonna ask our attorney to explore our options. And it is good to know that y'all have gotten to reply to y'all, we, we know we're calling the right number-
Yeah, it's for sure the right number, yeah.
But he just doesn't answer us back, so.
No, he did, he, I left him a message, it was that property, whatever, you know, and he thinks he's sitting on a gold mine there, and I'm like, you understand that you, you bought our drainage ponds first.
There's some kind of a mine, it's not a gold mine.
And so, but, and he was, like I said, he was, that's definitely the right number, so I just, if we could get maybe linked up with you, so that when, as this process moves forward, obviously, we would do whatever.
Ms. Olmstead, I've got your number, I can give it to Stephen.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I'll do that, okay.
They could actually, instead of communicating, see, I think they need to communicate with our planning department, because we, we don't want to run that tab up in the further, because-
Yeah.
Yeah, and I've been maintaining the one on our side a little bit right now.
Well, thank y'all for coming in and talking to us about this.
You guys have went in there and pulled those trees out, and that makes it a lot easier, like, for me to just go ahead and go in there and knock the grass down on our side, but-
We'll go into that one and the other one, and just at least scout that.
And I'll send you a bill, it'll be about fourteen thousand dollars.
We'll stay in touch with y'all. Thank y'all for being here.
Thank y'all.
Good to see y'all.
You too.
Joe?
Think we're gonna have to have a permit to close them.
We'd have to have a DEQ permit to close them, yeah.
I gotta check with DEQ.
We got the process sent to us in an email form when we were talking to DEQ, they've sent us the whole-
Yeah.
Process that we have to do, so. Okay. Would y'all like to make a motion to declare these two parcels as health and safety hazards and to engage Stephen Pittman as our attorney to dig into this a little more and see what we can do to try to make the owner participate in the payment here?
No move.
Motion.
That's like, yeah.
There's a motion from Alderman Piper, second from Alderman Miller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, that motion passes. Item twenty-two is the utility adjustments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, that motion passes. Need a motion, gotta find my paper, need a motion for closed determination to go into executive session for public works personnel and potential flooding litigation.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, that motion passes. We are now in closed determination.